All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting's order here at 7 o'clock. First order of business on the agenda is we'll take a moment of silence. All right. And I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Asasi?
Present.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
President O'Connor.
Present. Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Bliss and Commissioner Jones?
Some move.
Support.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are offering Spanish-language interpretation services.
Good evening. We're pleased to provide a Spanish interpretation service this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieren proveer comentario público. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up for public comments on agenda items. These are items that we voted on earlier today in one of our committee meetings. We do ask that you state your name and the city you live in. The rules for public comment are on the board. Just expected to respect everyone's opinion that is at the dais taking their time to speak publicly. Mr. Miller, good evening, sir.
Very pleasant. Good evening, everyone. Watchdog Miller reporting to the House of the People. Let's get to work. Three Ks on work. So, Mayor Bliss, there's no explanation for Mayor Bliss. She's getting 70,000 a year.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller. What was the... The salute, Mr. Miller, is not acceptable. Mr. Miller, you know that?
Why?
Because it's racist and offensive, and I'm not going to deal with it tonight, okay?
Okay. All right. Number two, support. We're talking 9B2. Three, no description. I think what, four and a half million on that? That should be detailed. Four, approve. The police should be funded, but they're overpaid. You're down to, what, 297 cops? And under Mayor Logue, Veteran Logue, we had 363 police. It's way down. So definitely fund the cops under four. Five, oppose. What's routine? You know, we have a whole lot of fascism there. And on seven, eight, and nine, there's no description on this. You call this... This is a comic book. There are no descriptions on seven, eight, and nine under B. Need way more details. Ten, totally oppose with three Z's on oppose. 800 grand. What's that all about? What's wrong with the setup we have right now? 800 grand gone, and when you're not plowing, you're not plowing the city sidewalks in our neighborhoods. Eleven, again, no description. Which law firms? Okay, some of them have an anti-Catholic and racist record. How did this get on the agenda? And what law firms under 12 are the... Exactly. Nine, three, let's see. Madison. You canceled bus route three. You know where the three goes? The three goes back to Horse Trail on Lafayette and later Madison. It's outdoing business running right now out to River Y because you guys sleepwalk through the agenda. You don't realize what's going on. Also, before that, the Madison Square 19 was stolen. The Madison Square ran on the Cottage Corridor. That would be ran eastern in Oakdale, I think it was. On, let's see, five, four, totally oppose. You canceled the city bus out to Forest Street Woods and to Valley Field. Bring route back route 18 first. You was side guy. That is anti-Catholic, what I consider racism. Why did this get on the agenda in the first place? On six, we need bus service out there. The Madison used to run out in that General Corridor. You already have 241 miles of bike miles in the street, dozens of which slow down our city buses getting here. And that's totally another matter of which buses come downtown. On seven...
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Your time's up.
So you call me racist, right?
Anyone else choosing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close that public comment period. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from October 12, 2021. Can I get a motion?
Some moved.
Support, moved and supported. Any questions, comments, discussion around the minutes? All right, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item seven on our agenda is petitions and communications. Mr. Clerk?
The first one is a communication received from Maria Moreno expressing disappointment in the approval of the renaming of Granville Avenue.
That report is received and filed.
Communication received from Brennan Jacques urging the City Commission to pass a new proposal on the fiscal year 2022 to prioritize community safety and justice.
That report is received and filed. Item eight is reports of city officers.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of September 29, 2021 through October 12, 2021, in the amount of $20,545,272.41.
That report is received and filed.
And treasurer's report for the period of September 25, 2021 through October 8, 2021.
That report is received and filed. Now onto item nine, which is our consent agenda. These are items that we voted on earlier today in one of our committees. Can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Some move.
All right, moved and supported. Congress, any questions about any items? All right, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Onto item 10. We don't have any item. Nothing has been removed from consent tonight, so now it's on to ordinances that will be adopted. Mr. Clerk?
First one is the first and only one is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2021-13 for fiscal year 2022, Amendment Number 4.
Be a motion? Moved and supported. And Commissioner Asasi, would you give us a little background on this?
Thank you, Commissioner. So in fiscal today, we had Ms. Clarin present a number of items, 12 different items, as it related to the budget ordinance. I'll just briefly go over the topics. It was our engineering department for Vital Streets, the fire department for a FEMA assistance grant, Project Safe Neighborhoods grant, the water department regarding replacement of private-led service lines, staffing in our environmental services department, a transfer to our Affordable Housing Fund, an item regarding DART program funding, another piece around Vital Streets, more from the engineering department, our parks and recs department, and community development related to the home investment partnership. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Clerk, just call the roll.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Motion carries. And can I get a motion to give that immediate effect?
Some move.
All right, moved and supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, that concludes the business portion of our agenda. We are now on to our final public comment period. So if you have a public comment you'd like to address the commission about, please come to the podium, and you can form a line along the west wall. There's a signing sheet over there. If you could provide us your name and the city in which you live in, so that our records can be updated appropriately, we'd ask you to do so. Please address the commission, not the audience, and please keep your comments respectful. All right.
Am I good to go?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Ally and the president...
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order here at seven o'clock. First order of business on the agenda is we'll take a moment of silence. All right. And I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Asasi?
Present.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
President O'Connor?
Present. Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Bliss and Commissioner Jones?
Support.
Support.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are offering Spanish-language interpretation services.
Good evening. We're pleased to provide a Spanish interpretation service this evening. This include interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Buenas noches. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieren proveer comentario público. Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up for public comments on agenda items. These are items that we voted on earlier today in one of our committee meetings. We do ask that you state your name and the city you live in. The rules for public comment are on the board. Just expected to respect everyone's opinion that is at the dais, taking their time to speak publicly. Mr. Miller, good evening, sir.
Very pleasant. Good evening, everyone. Watchdog Miller, reporting to the House of the People. Let's get to work. Three Ks on work. So, Mayor Bliss, there's no explanation for Mayor Bliss.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
She's getting seventy thousand a year.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller.
Which is not on the agenda.
The salute, Mr. Miller, is not acceptable. Mr. Miller, you know that?
Why?
Because it's racist and offensive. And I'm not going to deal with it tonight, okay?
Okay. All right, number two, support. We're talking nine B, two. Three, no description. What, four and a half million on that? That should be detailed. Four, approve. The police should be funded, but they're overpaid. Down to what, two hundred ninety-seven cops? And under Mayor Logley, veteran Logley, we had three hundred and sixty-three police. It's way down. So definitely fund the cops under four. Five, oppose, what's routine? You know, we have a whole lot of fascism there. And on seven, eight, and nine, there's no description on this. You call this, this is a comic book. There are no descriptions on seven, eight, and nine under B. Need way more details. Ten, totally opposed with three Z's on opposed. Eight hundred grand, what's that all about? And what's wrong with the setup we have right now? Eight hundred grand gone, then when you're not plowing, you're not plowing the city sidewalks in our neighborhoods. Eleven, again, no description. Which law firms? Okay, some of them have an anti-Catholic and racist record. How did this get on the agenda? And what law firms under twelve are the exactly? Nine, C, three. Let's see, Madison. You cancel bus route three. You know where the three goes? The three goes back to horse trail on Lafayette and later Madison. It's outdoing business running right now out to River Y because you guys sleepwalk through the agenda. You don't realize what's going on. Also, before that, the Madison Core Nineteen was stolen. The Madison Square ran on the cottage corridor. That would be, ran eastern in Oakdale, I think it was. On, let's see, five, four. Totally opposed. You canceled the city bus out to Forest Street Woods and to Valley Field. Bring back Route Eighteen first. You was side guy. That is anti-Catholic, what I consider racism. Why did this get on the agenda in the first place? On six, we need bus service out there. The Madison used to run out in that general corridor. You already have two hundred forty-one miles of bike miles in the street, dozens of which slow down our city buses getting here. And that's totally another matter of which buses come downtown. On seven.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, your time's up.
So you call me racist, right?
Anyone else choosing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close that public comment period. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from October 12, 2021. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support, moved and supported. Any questions, comments, discussion around the minutes? All right, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item seven on our agenda is petitions and communications. Mr. Clerk?
First one is a communication received from Maria Moreno expressing disappointment in the approval of the renaming of Granville Avenue.
That report is received and filed.
Communication received from Brennan Jacques urging the city commission to pass a new proposal on the fiscal year 2022 to prioritize community safety and justice.
That report is received and filed. Item eight is reports of city officers.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of September 29, 2021 through October 12, 2021, in the amount of twenty million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-one cents.
That report is received and filed.
And treasurer's report for the period of September 25, 2021 through October 8, 2021.
That report is received and filed. Now onto item nine, which is our consent agenda. These are items that we voted on earlier today in one of our committees. Can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, moved and supported. Congress, any questions about any items? All right, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Onto item ten, we don't have any item, nothing has been removed from consent tonight, so now it's on to ordinances that will be adopted. Mr. Clerk?
First one is, first and only one is an ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance 2021-13 for fiscal year 2022, amendment number four.
Do you motion? Moved and supported. And Commissioner Asasi, would you give us a little background on this?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So in fiscal today, we had Ms. Claren present a number of items, twelve different items, as it related to the budget ordinance. I'll just briefly go over the topics. It was our engineering department for Vital Streets, the fire department for a FEMA assistance grant, Project Safe Neighborhoods grant, the water department regarding replacement of private-led service lines, staffing in our environmental services department, a transfer to our affordable housing fund, an item regarding DART program funding, another piece around Vital Streets, more from the engineering department, our parks and recs department, and community development related to the home investment partnership. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, comments? All right. Hearing none, clerk, just call the roll.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes. Motion carries. And can I get a motion to give that immediate effect?
So moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, that concludes the business portion of our agenda. We are now on to our final public comment period. So if you have a public comment you'd like to address the commission about, please come to the podium and you can form a line along the west wall. There's a signing sheet over there. If you could provide us your name and the city in which you live in, so that our records can be updated appropriately. We'd ask you to do so. Please address the commission, not the audience, and please keep your comments respectful. All right.
Am I good to go?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Ally and the president of Justice for Black Lives. Last week while I was speaking, I was really interrupted and my time was cut short. However, I'm not going to spend my whole speech talking about that, considering it's very minor on my list of priorities. However, I do want to address the fact that it's interesting that a city, for a city to declare racism a public health crisis, while also being willing to silence black voices for speaking up against the people who are constantly hurting us and even allowing racial slurs to be said within these meetings. So much for making it a safe space, but I will commend you, Commissioner O'Connor, for calling out the ignorance from earlier. If only our mayor could do the same, that'd be fantastic. Defund the police. We're one of the many cities that are screaming this while also being ignored by the people that work for us. So many times over this past year, we have been given excuse after excuse as to why GRPD can't be defunded, when it's very much possible, especially given the fact that we currently benefit from things caused by defunding the police in the past. Up until the seventies, a lot of ambulance services were usually ran by local police departments and the officers assigned to work under these services were put there as a punishment. Now, the last thing that we need in black neighborhoods especially are cops, crooked cops that are there as a punishment. Obviously, this caused a lot of more people to be hurt than helped by these services. So at this point, it's very dangerous and it caused citizens to come up with their own form of ambulance services called Freedom House. Freedom House ambulance services became a golden standard for emergency response training that eventually the city that it was in reallocated funds from the police department and put that to an actual emergency service separate from the police. So as you can see, defunding the police is very possible and it's been done before, and I know you all know that. Not only do we need to fund the police, but we need to hold them accountable. You've heard our stories, you've seen the videos in which they were hurting us. And if you're going to make racism a public health crisis, do so in your work, not just by saying it. Policing is inherently racist and deeply infiltrated by people with white supremacist ideologies. In 2006, the FBI made an assessment on the policing system in the United States and that assessment warned that white supremacist infiltration of police could result in a passive tolerance of racism. You have streets here to honor MLK and Breonna Taylor and Cesar Chavez, but what are you doing to fix, to live up to their legacies? Nothing. So fix it. Because right now, I may be written off as a disrespectful woman who flips off city commissioners and screams in cops' faces, but I'm also the future of this country. I'm a taxpayer and a registered voter. I will continue to make my voices heard until our demands are met. Defund the police, black lives matter.
Thank you for your comments. Next comment?
Hi, thank you. My name is Shane, I'm from the Third Ward. I am the director of research and development for Justice for Black Lives. I'd like to preface this by saying, Commissioner O'Connor, I was very surprised by you standing up against racist speech. It gave me hope that you have a heart and a voice. Silence is violence and I appreciate you standing up against something unjust. I want to talk a little bit about slave patrol, not much, but police were created out of a need to control the black population. It's in history books because their purpose was, has been to facilitate the oppression of minority populations since they were formed. It's interesting how supporting the police is considered respectable. However, historically, it's known as support of the slave patrol. If you want to be seen as a decent human, learn the history and go forth accordingly. As for the commissioners, you all claim to understand our pain, yet you sit on your ivory thrones of privilege and ignorant decadence. Everyone is supposed to respect you, despite your blatant disregard for our lives. So in that spirit, let me give you a bit of harsh truth. How can you go home to your families, enjoy all the basic aspects of life that we are not granted without attempting to aid in that? We have a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, none of which are seen. How can you listen to the screams of your people and do nothing while we bleed in our streets? How can you remain silent in the face of all that is wrong in our society? And as for my melanin-blessed commissioners, you're a disgrace to your people. You sit and claim to understand our pain because we share a skin tone. You are the worst of them all. Your internalized colonization and ignorant acceptance of systematic racism is disgusting. What we go through doesn't affect you, so it doesn't affect us. I lose a piece of my soul every time I come and speak to you. Your blatant disregard for our well-being isn't subtle and it isn't going to be forgotten. We know where we stand. You should make the right choice before you find yourselves in situations beyond your control. You hide behind a facade of strength and power, a guise of being respectable and honest humans, but I see you for what you are. And unfortunately, sometimes that's as uneducated and great struggling to maintain the very fragile positions of power you believe you possess. Your position is temporary, this movement is not. We've been fighting for community control of the police since their emergence. This fight may take my life, but this will continue long after I'm gone. You can't stop a revolution. So drink some Seven Up, eat a moon pie, and stop murdering people, please.
Next person?
Hello, I'm Jalen Reynolds, Grand Rapids resident. Hello, and I would like to thank city attorney Hitchcock and code enforcement director Ross for meeting with me last week. I hope this to be the first of many meetings with city leadership to combat issues that this community faces. It reminded me to keep an open mind, a truly open mind that is willing to challenge its own initial assumptions about who is who and what is what. At the outset of that meeting, Ms. Hitchcock said something that stuck with me, that she wanted to hear my ideas and what I had to say and not just what I was bringing for others' concerns, but that I was the one that reached out and decided to have a sit-down to talk that y'all honored. And I could tell that it was serious because both of y'all had pens and pads and y'all were ready to take notes. So I want to continue engaging with the leadership of this city. And you asked me for answers, and I believe that I have some. I want to have a formal opportunity to have one agenda item voted on. I want to bring one city policy before you in its current state and draft a revision for it and have a full and fair opportunity to argue its merits and for it to be voted upon. Because I believe that legislation has a profound impact on issues and opens the door for bigger changes. I know that in and of itself is a big ask, because many come before you seeking your ear. And I don't ask for a guaranteed outcome on it or any assurances that I will get my way or prevail, but I do want a full and fair opportunity for it to be known. This request goes out to the entire commission. And the item I want to choose has a compelling public and governmental interest and even an interest for those who publicly oppose you. I want this in the purest spirit of diplomacy, because we all want something, but we can't get everything. But we should all leave with something. That's progress. If any among you are interested, I will send an email out so that we can find a time that fits our respective schedules and we can find a time to meet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next commenter?
Hi there. Name's Christian Villagomez. I'm a registered voter here in the city of Grand Rapids. And I just needed to put in my two cents tonight, it would just be regarding the use of fossil fuels in the city. And I just actually attended the climate rally here in Grand Rapids just this Saturday. It was pretty rainy. It really rained down hard midway during the speech. We had lots of climate speakers that day pouring their life stories into what living amongst nature and the world means to them. And we stressed sort of priorities that the commission puts into their sort of locked-in-place plans, especially regarding energy. But renewable, renewable is the name, because fossil fuel, fossil fuel is a death wish. I keep myself informed about that issue every single day. Quite unfortunately, actually, we really need to actually just pump the brakes on fossil fuels, period. Every single day, it's just another nightmare story. It makes me sick, morning, afternoon, night. And to have conflicts of interest always pop up in these stories I read from officials, just excuses day in and day out, when we can read the paper trails. I really can't take that kind of lies. Like just, I'm sickened by lies. It's a very human trait, I'll acknowledge that among everybody. And it's just going to get more obvious. I think a lot of us kind of feel it's getting more obvious with each day. And, you know, I gotta, you know, I gotta stress, the sooner the better, because it's just going to get more expensive. From a fiscal perspective, it's just going to get more of a pain to deal with. So sooner we get that in, you know, in motion, the less headaches we're going to have. Because it's been, it's been a mess in many regards, not just in climate, but just in politics in general. But I really gotta stress that, because we literally need to be smart with our climate if we actually want to literally keep surviving. So yeah, my two cents tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next commenter, please?
My name is Chelsea and I'm the marketing director for JFPL. I have a bone to pick with every single one of you, but today I'm going to start with Mark Washington. I read an article about the city attorney and how one of their roles are usually prosecuting the misdemeanors and community-based offenses. I also knew that the city manager, Anita, and Mark Washington usually work hand-in-hand. After further research, I came to the conclusion that you, Mark Washington, has some type or full control on if protesters' charges are able to be dropped or not. You and the city attorney are a huge part of the problem of why my friends and comrades are continuously being arrested, assaulted, and harassed, all because of a megaphone. How can you, as a black man and you as a black woman, sit here and continue putting black or brown people through so much as if we haven't been through, endured enough? To all of you, black and brown individuals up here, when we say all skinfolk and kinfolk, that is the definition of all of you. I'm coming for your seat, Mark Washington, and everyone else who sits on this board. I will eat, sleep, and breathe this next election and make sure all of you are voted out and removed. Also, Commissioner Moody, I have a bone to pick with you too, but I will start on you at the next commissioner's meeting. You all, as well as GRPD, discuss me on so many levels. And I mean this from the bottom of my heart, fuck all of you on this board and fuck GRPD.
Hey, you're done. Next commenter?
I don't know if you want to start the clock over or not.
He's working on it. There you go. Your time has begun.
Hi, I'm Lou. I come to most meetings and speak on a couple of things that are important to me. One is defunding GRPD to the allotted thirty-two percent to start, and then from there, keep winding down that budget. The other thing I talk a lot about is the unhoused community and the lack of effort that the city's putting in to stop the housing crisis and get people into homes. So a couple of things that I wanted to touch on is, at the last couple of meetings, there was talk and agreeance upon staffing more GRPD officers with different funds from like different areas. But I hear people come up here and ask for more policing and it's really hard to fathom that we need more policing when we have over twenty-five to thirty bike cops harassing peaceful protesters over a witch hunt for a megaphone. So when, are we going to fight crime or are we going to harass peaceful protesters that are using their First Amendment right? On Friday evening, there was over thirty officers there. There was one traffic stop that happened for a citation that used three officers along with the twenty-five to thirty-plus officers on bikes over an activist with a megaphone. I suggest you read some of the Supreme Court cases in regards to using your First Amendment rights, because Ally does nothing wrong by using a megaphone. Donnie does nothing wrong by speaking in Rosa Parks Circle. Those are his First Amendment rights, as same as they're Ally's First Amendment rights as well. They're all of us, because we have a First Amendment right and you guys are not allowing us to use it. It's a constant witch hunt for activists in this community. However, people still come up here and say, we need more policing, we need more policing. No, you need to reallocate what you have, because sending thirty-five to forty police after peaceful protesters doesn't make sense when the crime rates continue to escalate in our city. Violent crime rates continue to escalate. Right, so how is more policing going to help that with how you're using your police force now? I'm asking again to please drop charges against all protesters. Mark Washington, if you do have a hand in that, like please just think about how these charges are going to affect people for the rest of their lives, because now y'all are slapping felonies on. It's not just misdemeanors that are going to get dropped. You guys are slapping peaceful protesters with felony charges. That's going to really mess up someone's future. If you aren't aware of the struggles of those who have had felonies on their record and that still currently do and people who are released from incarceration, a felony impacts a lot of things for this person, for these people that you continue to charge with these things. This is your city. You know, it's our city really, but you seem to hold a lot more control of it than we do. So please listen to what the city members are asking for.
Time is up. Next commenter, please?
Hello, my name is Eden Denton. I've lived in Grand Rapids since 2011. I came here as a seventeen-year-old and started college. I immediately met the father of my child and got into a lot of trouble until we had my daughter, who is now almost seven. On May 7th of 2020, I was assaulted by two GRPD officers from behind. They smacked my forehead onto the concrete and gave me permanent brain damage. Shortly after that, I was in Kent County and assaulted by fifteen officers, at least as an eyewitness, one by one. I went to the hospital the next day and I have permanent brain damage. And I was diagnosed with a traumatic brain injury that will never heal. Frontal lobe concussion, my short-term memory, gone. I can't even hardly read a full page of a book, which by the way, I used to love reading books. Now it is too frustrating. I'm suing Kent County and GRPD right now. Pro bono lawyers keep dropping my cases. It's happened twice now. I wonder why they won't take the case, because they are too afraid to face a city that has such skewed politics that homelessness is treated as a crime and police get to do whatever the fuck they want, excuse my language.
So I have a few questions. When are the Grand Rapids police officers taught to brandish a weapon? At one point, these are all hypothetical questions for you not to answer right now, but think about, of course. What is the signal that gives a GRPD the authority and the right to pull out a gun? Is it when they won't listen, when they're taking too long to whip out their ID? Why are the police officers so terrifying? Why are we living in fear? I thought Grand Rapids was better than that. I thought we had more heart than for the police of this city to be putting fear into its citizens on a daily mother effing basis. All right, it is sick. It is disgusting. Why are the politics in this city so skewed towards that one percent, the DeVosses and the Van Andles? Who, by the way, don't even tip that well. I used to bartend for them, okay? What are we doing to rehabilitate our criminals? Is every option to rehabilitate them for mental health and substance abuse, is all, are all those options exhausted before we lock them up? How can the police get away with violence that should never happen? How come domestic violence could be you spitting on someone or your girlfriend lying to the police and saying that you bruised her and then you get a domestic violence charge? And how come the police can fucking beat us up? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Third time, you're done. You're done, you're done. Time's up. Next commenter, please? Your time's up. Next commenter? Yeah? There's a chair. There you go. Next commenter? Next commenter.
My name's Gus. I just wanna talk briefly about an event that transpired this past Friday. Justice for Black Lives Matter held an event demanding justice for our community members who have been brutalized by GRPD. During this event, that we were peaceful the entire time, by the way, GRPD came out on bikes and started harassing us, unnecessarily riding next to us for half the march. We had to abandon our First Amendment rights to peacefully protest in the street and get on the sidewalk for fear of them, you know, bashing our skulls in again. Ally's megaphone was well within the sound ordinance limit, by the way, so no laws, no ordinance were being broken, yet GRPD continues to target this group, specifically our leaders. And I want to draw contrast with this event to the protests that was held a few weeks back, the Women's March. Not once did GRPD come to intimidate and harass people during that protest, which was predominantly white women. Now, a protest centering justice for black lives, following the same rules, being just as peaceful, why is one free to be in the streets, even getting help from an officer, but the other one, for some reason, needs to be silenced? It is not a far-out pipe dream of lunacy to defund our police. It is a fact that if we take funds from GRPD and funnel them into the communities that need it, crime will be reduced. Multiple, multitudes of cities in multitudes of countries have defunded their police forces and their crime rates have gone down. This is a fact. This isn't just us spewing dreams from our heads. This is written down. There are studies on it. So I don't understand why we're acting as if this isn't possible. It's being done as I speak right now. These countries that do it and these cities that do it, their crime rates have gone down, their people are happier, you know, their economies are good. Defunding the police only boosts their cities. That's all I wanted to say today. Defund GRPD. Black Lives Matter. Can't wait to vote you guys out.
All right, next commenter.
Hello, my name is Liv. I'm just gonna do this off the cuff today, so I apologize if I'm not that smooth. First of all, defund GRPD. We gotta say it every time, because you send dozens of bike cops out to harass an organization that's led by a teenager. I mean, pathetic. Good use of the tax dollars, guys. I also wanna talk today about community control of the police, because we can't have both and we should have both. In Chicago, you can look it up, everybody Google this, it's CPAC in Chicago, C-P-A-C. They just voted on it. They went up against the corrupt mayor in Chicago, Mayor Lightfoot, and all of the other corrupt city politicians. And Chicago's a big city. It's a lot bigger than Grand Rapids. So there are a lot more corrupt politicians than there are here, even though you guys are trying your best. Why do we not have hiring and firing power over these cops, like the corrupt cops that Ally was talking about earlier in her speech? What kind of democracy is it where, and I've seen the poll numbers, guys, a few weeks ago when the polls came out, GRPD's numbers aren't looking so hot. I don't know if you guys saw that. So why, why does this public opinion not seem to matter at all? Like, to my knowledge, none of these cops that are unpopular have been fired. Why are they all still here? If we had a real system for community control and community power in this city, we wouldn't be dealing with this shit.
Hey, come on.
Respect.
I swear, like a sailor, I don't swear at these meetings, okay? It's not that hard.
Okay. Well, you also don't talk about a whole lot of importance, it seems like. But, yeah, you know, what kind of democracy do we have where public opinion is just straight up ignored like this? If we had a committee in place with hiring and firing power over these cops, we would not have corrupt cops and maybe their approval ratings would be a little better. I don't know. It's worth a shot. What do you guys think? You wanna vote for it? I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Graff. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids and I'm here representing Link Up. I wanna take this opportunity to read a statement that was released earlier today from Link, NAACP, and Urban Corps Collective. "In what has been a longstanding practice of poor community engagement, the Grand Rapids Police Department announced a public comment opportunity for the community to share feedback with the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission regarding GRPD's use of best practices less than 24 hours before it is scheduled. The accreditation lasts for three years. It is not only a poor practice in community engagement, it is a decision to backtrack from statements regarding transparency and valuing the community's best interests. Our call to action is for the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission to extend the call option of the public comment period to two weeks with varying time during and after typical business hours, offer multiple community listening sessions, and ensure accreditation standards are made readily and easily available online for the community. Because of the limited time between announcing the opportunity to get a public comment and this morning, we have compiled a list of examples of the Grand Rapids Police Department disregarding best practices, use of excessive force, and clear examples of police violence targeting community members. The included examples come from the last three years, given the three-year term of accreditation. However, the Grand Rapids Police Department has a history of disregarding best practices recommended by civilian boards, nationally-backed research, and studies conducted by consultants hired by the significant rapids. Examples of GRPD disregarding best practices include October 2018 police handcuffed black 12-year-old girl. April 2019 Hilliard and Heights LLC deployment study finds GRPD ineffectively deploys officers using department resources inefficiently. The study finds GRPD officers are disproportionately deployed to black and Hispanic neighborhoods. January 2020, Grand Rapids Police Department remains under investigation by the Michigan Department of Civil Rights Commission, 28 total complaints being investigated. May 2020, GRPD proposes 1 million budget cut to community engagement programs. March 2021, Grand Rapids Police Officers Association blocks new strategic plan goals to create more civilian positions to align with best practices for efficient use of resources. April 2021, GRPD officers punched blackmail driver in the face repeatedly during traffic stop using excessive force. April 2021, Office of Oversight and Public Accountability releases statement announcing GRPD's noncompliance with the requirement to release evidence associated with internal affairs investigations. August 2021, GRPD points gun at Latinx teens head violating the GRPD youth interaction policy. September 2021, GRPD used excessive force, wrongfully arresting a black man, leaving his job. More than 10 officers were deployed to the scene. September 2021, Office of Oversight and Public Accountability files for an internal affairs investigation for this wrongful arrest. To announce a two-hour public comment period with less than 24 hours notice is both a direct reflection of-
Time's up, sir. Thank you. Time's up.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. Oh, man, where do I even start? It's only three minutes. So I went to the Forbes 30 on the 30. It's pretty fun. Got to meet some elite entrepreneurs. Got to meet Al Harrington. Got to meet the founder of Forbes, The Culture, finally in person. They actually have a Forbes list for African-American and brown people, so if you happen to be that, you feel like you're elite and believe in yourself, you should try to get it. Also said last time when I was here at the city commission that people in this room can't outpass me. I feel like I have an example here. I ran the 25K. I finished it. If you can't run 16 miles, please don't talk crazy to me, because this is real, like, achievement. I pushed my mind, body, and soul as much as I could, and I achieved a great feat. So that's something I'm very proud of, because I like to push myself to the limit and like to push people to their highest extent. Also, I'm an author of a book. Today, I actually launched, actually, I wanna give a shout-out to Ms. Harris, Shannon Harris, because she actually is the Executive Director of Our Community's Children. When I started working at Steeple Town Neighborhood Services three years ago, my mentor Corey Anderson brought me here, and that's when I started to get engaged with the city commission meetings. From there on, I went through the LEAD program, and that's how I found about the Safe Pitch Task Force, which I won that three years ago. So this book that I'm a co-author in, right now, we are number one on Amazon for organizational change. We're number two for sports training. We are number two for sports coaching. This is only the first day. It didn't even get released on Barnes &amp; Noble yet, so that's crazy. But more than that, I'm just really excited to be back in the city, to push forward, to do my equity work that I've been doing. I'm just really excited to be back. Also, I just wanna talk about Seeds of Promise. Seeds of Promise is doing some great work. I'm working with Seeds of Promise right now, trying to let people know that there are rent-to-own options. Seeds of Promise isn't doing that. That's actually the dwelling place, but Seeds of Promise is doing a lot of different equity training and equity work, and so I would advise people to go out there and try to tap into those resources. Also, we are number, when I checked the Amazon list to see where we were ranked at for sales right now, yesterday, we were at 600,000. That's before the book, we originally launched the book, and now we are 6,000. And so, moving up pretty fast, man. I'm excited for 2020. I know I'm gonna break a lot of barriers. I know I'm gonna win a lot of awards. I know it's gonna be a lot of speaking engagements. I actually got invited to speak at a global summit, and so, man, it's crazy. But I'm gonna just leave and look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
Hello? Hi, my name is Justin Adio. I live in Grand Rapids. This is the first time speaking, because usually people say the things I would say anyway, so figure it's kinda redundant to get up, but it's come to the point where I must speak up. Every time I come here, which seems a long time now, I see some of the best and most committed people stand up for some of the most just and necessary causes. The unhoused community, climate change, affordable housing, cleaning up the river, psilocybin therapy, and I see them patronized, if not outright ignored. And then I think, if they are given the time of day, how would they be financed? And then I remember, JFBL has a solution that can fund all these things. Defund the police. So I beseech everyone here in the audience who is standing up for these causes, then instead of begging individually for a crumb of funding or recognition, to get behind JFBL and form a coalition in which we can bust open this commission like a piggy bank, or better yet, a pinata. If we stand together, we can make the funding come raining down on us like candy from the obscenely overstocked police budget. Because if you think these clowns up here will do anything else but placate you with chump change and abandon you when it's politically expedient, you got another thing coming. Together, we are strong. As the poet Shelley once said, "Ye are many, they are few." Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Next commenter, please.
Hello, my name is Andrea. I live in Grand Rapids. It's getting harder and harder for me to come up here and talk to all of you, not because I don't have a lot to say, but because I feel like I'm not being heard, and I think others feel the same way. I'm not sure how to effectively communicate with any of you. I have written emails, but they've been ignored. Many of us have been asking that you bring back the virtual public comments. I know at least a dozen of us that have repeatedly addressed that idea, and we never get any feedback from any of you. We're still in a pandemic. This room is often crowded. Some people are immunocompromised, some are disabled, some have issues with childcare or work obligations. Every single meeting, you talk about respecting everyone's right to be heard, but I gotta say, it's hypocritical. Other cities across the country are making this happen remotely, so I don't know why you won't give any feedback on it. I don't come here to speak at you. I don't think this is the best way to have a discussion. It would be nice if we could form a committee amongst a couple commissioners and a couple JFBL leaders to sit at a roundtable and have an actual, open exchange of feedback. There is just so much roadblock between us, community members, and our city leaders, and I really just don't understand it. But it is frustrating and tiresome. How do we form a resolution or agenda item to be voted on? I'd really appreciate feedback from any of you. We need to reallocate some money from the police budget. It's not cute that we can't have a very peaceful, organized, and safe protest without being highly outnumbered and targeted by bike police. This noise ordinance law, you all know it's ridiculous. I mean, it's actually embarrassing for our city. Everyone is watching. You know, the 100-feet noise measured vertically and horizontally makes no sense, and you're only targeting JFBL leaders. Also, drop the charges on all protesters that you've targeted over this petty, made-up ordinance. And the last thing is the brutality from GRPD. Many of my comrades have courageously come up here and told you their experiences in tears while shaking, and all of us have witnessed the successive force. There was no clashes. It's flat-out assault, and none of you have given any feedback to them. How would you feel if it were you? Again, it doesn't look good for our city. Everyone's watching. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
My name is Mark from Grand Rapids. Before I get through what I have to get through, let's keep in mind, the city manager is selected, not elected. So I'm gonna move on from there. Now, everybody talking about defunding, defunding, defunding. Let me give you my definition of defunding. Say you got Planned Parenthood. Everybody talking about defund Planned Parenthood. Your defunding is taking every penny of their money, all their money, all of their money. That is defunding. Now, allocating GRPD's budget by 32%, you're taking out 32% of their budget. They're getting 68%. They're still gonna get their money. Now, the problem, the problem here is, I don't know what their hiring process is, but as far as I know, there are very few black officers on the street. And there are zero black females in the entire department. And no, interns and cadets do not count. Now, if you want, no, 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 everybody talking about these noise ordinance, talking about a megaphone, let me tell you something. I see individuals going up and down Fulton Street at night, riding motorcycles, ATVs, doing wheelies, standing up, looking, seeing their Evel Knievel and everything, and no one stopped them. And here, we talking about some megaphone you see at a high school football game. Y'all to make up your minds, amplified noise means more than just megaphones. It means more, it's, you see, I hear these loud vehicles, these coming out with these big loud sounds, looking, going up and down Fulton Street like they're going down Martin Dragway. Yet, there's no police presence there. But when there's police presence there, it's basically like, almost 90% of the department is there, the department is there, while in the outskirts, you have your crime.
All right, so your time's up.
All right, thank you.
My name is Donnie, and I'm, and I live in the 3rd Ward. I'm also the Vice President of Justice for Black Lives. First and foremost, I'd like to address that. Defunding, the term "defund" actually means "reallocate." It means take some funding from somewhere who's, from some company and/or business, AKA GRPD, taking that money and reallocating it, spreading it around throughout the community so that we can best fit what our community needs. I'm here to talk about GRPD and how inappropriate and how they have been targeting not only just me, but also comrades and people who have been protesting peacefully this entire time. I'm here to talk about- this entire time. I'm here to talk about this city having a specific thirty-person bike cop sent, bike squad, sent for peaceful protesters, that's what I'm talking about, thirty cops for peaceful protesters. Yes, I think you should look down John O'Connor, because it is very embarrassing. We all should be embarrassed. Y'all all should be embarrassed, every single one of you. Mayor Bliss herself should be embarrassed for not being here, because people die, for, for, for in the streets. People are dying because they're being brutalized by people like this, because they take this oath to protect the community here, but actually give zero concern as to why and how to acknowledge and approach humanity, the people who live here. They do not know how to communicate. We are sick and tired of y'all doing, sending these things out into the community, saying that you're trying to acknowledge what is happening, oh, you want community feedback. This is the community giving you feedback right here. We're all in this room. So the people opposing, the people opposing to not defund GRPD, where are they? The people who are, the people who are coming and saying that they need more policing, where are they? Because we're coming here day in and day out, telling you that police, if we get more police, there will be more deaths, because they do not know how to do their jobs correctly. I'm also here to touch on, it's sad to me that I can't even get through the full three minutes to all the other things and the possibilities of this city, because I can't even get over the fact that you are protected, we are not. Because out of the, out of the weeks of coming in here, week after week after week, the only thing that is up here is the level of security for yourself. So understand, you are protected to a certain extent, but when it is you that is in that car with a gun face towards you, because you have been, you have been accused of stealing that car, we do not want to hear it.
Your time is up.
Black Lives Matter!
Next commenter, please.
Hello. Hello. Okay, where did, hello, I'm Lucas Fridsma, a fifteen-year-old Grand Rapids resident. I'd like to talk briefly about a big question among politicians. Is it really within our reach to solve climate change? We know that it might still be possible to solve the problem, but it, but is it within our economic power? Well, at this rate, we have less than seven years until the effects of climate change are irreversible. We are already seeing devastating effects right now, with the total cost of climate change-related disasters costing the world $210 billion of damage in 2020. Consider the moral stance, too. Over one million species will have been lost due to climate change by 2050. It is clear that the chips are down when it comes to climate change. However, we lose nothing from trying to fix it. In fact, the net economic benefit of the world mitigating climate change ranges from $127 trillion to $616 trillion by 2100, including expenses, but the net loss of doing nothing about it would range from $150 trillion to as much as $792 trillion by 2100, according to Nature Magazine. So how can Grand Rapids contribute to fixing climate change? The current city of Grand Rapids strategic plan includes some good sustainability practices. However, more can be done, especially from my generation, who will inherit this planet and the consequences of our current actions and enactions. I've seen what Grand Rapids has done to encourage citizen participation in recycling. I would like to see sustainability education brought to public schools. This will help us follow through with our purpose of free recycling and other sustainable incentives. It will help inspire people of our generation to be innovators for a world of increasingly perilous conditions. In the end, I think it will be, in the end, I think it will make the world a better place. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
I'm Casey. I'm from the Third Ward. I'd like to address the lead poisoning in Grand Rapids water. Bliss had the authority to say that kids are not ingesting lead through the water, but in 2019, twenty-nine Michigan counties failed lead water tests with ninetieth percentile results. Kent County was one of those counties. MLive wrote an article, but I didn't need that, because I live in the Third Ward, where I receive an annual letter from the City of Grand Rapids, as well as my property management, stating that the levels are too high to consume or for external use, along with a list of ways to make the water usable at all. They don't send those lists to Caledonia, where our mayor lives. Maybe that's why she's advocating for kayaks. When we say things like equal opportunity for BIPOC, that does not include things like eating at an already-established, black-owned restaurant, and wrapping it up with a picture for the media and a ten percent tip. It means equal opportunity for BIPOC. It means stop harassing, brutalizing, arresting, charging, and murdering BIPOC, and hold those who do accountable. The police should be responsible for their own liability insurance. It would create a platform for their records, habitual offenses, accountability. It would relieve the taxpayers from paying for police misconduct, as well as potentially build some trust and transparency between the good cops and the community. I want to talk about how Womack closed out the city meeting he attended. He said, "The GR committee is diverse. There are people who want to defund the police, and people who back the blue. The committee is here to accommodate everyone. Ultimately, Michigan has been and always will be a police state." Isn't that contradicting? Here to appease both sides, yet will never change. It reminds me of when Washington flat-out said, "I will never defund the police, so stop calling and emailing about it." Diverse does not mean black faces. We need leaders who can hear us and do more than cry, like Yassasi does. More than Moody, who speaks on our behalf at public events, and, that are publicized, and then forgets who we are otherwise. More than Bliss, who doesn't recognize that we did community cleanups for three months, while she does one for a publicity stunt. More than Washington, who has the ability, hand in hand with Hitchcock, to drop protesting charges and doesn't. It's okay that you're not it. Voting is coming up, and Washington, when you don't see these faces anymore, you'll have to rely on the new ones we voted in to appoint you. When you clock out at night, you leave this at your desk. We go home and teach the next generation what's happening. We teach them about real change and the smile-and-not approach you all take. I rarely see anyone from the other side here. They aren't here. They aren't having these conversations at home either. They're sitting in their privilege. Us and ours are pure passion. It's only a matter of time until GRPD is defunded, and the city of GR does become diverse with equal opportunity, with or without you.
All right, your time is up.
Save the "meet me personally" act, because we've done that.
Next commenter, please. Your time is up. Next commenter, please.
My name is Kirk. I live on stolen Anishinaabe land in the Third Ward of so-called Grand Rapids. I've been coming here as long as these meetings have been in person, and I gotta tell you guys, I'm pretty sick of, I'm pretty sick of coming here every time and telling you guys the same thing while your ears are so obviously closed. What's not clicking? You've heard well-reasoned-out, very logical proposals. You've heard researched-backed science and data on what the police are doing to this community and ways we can solve that issue. You've heard impassioned reports of the people who live in this city, the people who live in each one of your wards. You've heard tears, you've heard rage, you've heard silence. What's not clicking? What are you missing? Because I gotta tell you, coming here every other week and talking to a wall kills my soul a little bit every time, and I was thinking about that today. Not that I technically believe in the concept of souls, but like, if it's killing my soul so much to be this tangentially connected to a body of people who cares so little about the city, like, where did yours, where did your souls go? How long ago did you sell out? How long ago did you stop listening to the people who live here? I mean, I've heard words from you guys, talking about your happy home lives and like, declaring racism a public health crisis, but those are words, not actions. And the city is suffering. The police budget, as you know, is over the mandated thirty-two percent, but they're still getting it, even though it's against the rules, while people are starving in the streets, while people are houseless, while people are going to be dying in the cold this winter. What are you doing? Where are your actions? And when did you stop listening? I don't have much else to say, because everyone who spoke before me said it way better, but this is sad. I'm sad for our city. Fuck GRPD, Black Lives Matter.
Time's up. Next commenter.
My name is Rochelle. I live in the downtown district. I'm not really gonna waste my breath and take three minutes, because clearly you don't listen anyway. Instead, I just have three questions for you to ponder, and maybe even answer if you want to talk about anything other than your own accomplishments in your following period of comment tonight. Why exactly do we have to pay for a permit, to use our First Amendment right? Question one. You say in this city, to be out here as a group, we have to pay for a permit. That sounds like oppression, actually. Just throwing that out there. Question number two, though, why is it okay to harass and arrest people for being unhoused when your so-called hot team sits back and is never seen out in the community? Ever. If they're an outreach team, they should be out-reaching, right? They're not, though. Your hot team, well, let me call it "our" hot team, is sitting behind me. But we don't get recognition, just the people that sit in desks and the people that sit in offices and have nice little name tags get the recognition, right? Yeah, that's fine. We don't need it. We're gonna do it either way. One more question. Why is it acceptable to throw money and resources at brewery after brewery, and art fair, art prize after art prize, yet we come in here, meeting after meeting, asking for resources and asking for funding, and hmm, it's magically not available? Funny how that works. Funny. I'm just gonna say one more thing. We're tired of coming to these meetings. You've heard that a lot tonight, but please do not confuse that. We are not going to stop. We will be here at every single one of these meetings until something changes, until somebody has an aha moment and actually hears us. I don't want you to confuse those two things. Black Lives Matter.
All right, next commenter.
Hello, my name is Emily Oxford. I am a resident of the Second Ward, and I first would like to once again emphasize that GRPD needs to be defunded, defunded to the mandated thirty-two percent. A great example of this is the officer sitting here currently scrolling through social media, while we're actively trying to make our city a better place and hold our police accountable. We see you. Onto the next matter. I would like to ask the City Commission to revise City Commission Policy 800-02, to allow third-party appeals in response to internal affairs investigations to GRPD from, to the civilian appeals board. This summer, I witnessed GRPD hurting one attendee at a peaceful protest and arresting another for a noise ordinance that is infamously, probably unenforceable. So at the advice of Mayor Bliss herself, I filed a complaint with Police Internal Affairs with the help of the Office of Oversight and Police Accountability, the OPA. I got the results of the investigation. I found that there were many things lacking that I needed more answers to. I wanted a full third-party review from the civilian appeals board to confirm that the findings of GRPD could be substantiated. I submitted my appeal. I then found out recently that I could not actually submit this appeal, because I was a third party to the events that had happened, rather than someone who had been arrested or assaulted. And this is troubling for a number of reasons. On the one hand, sure, I didn't get beat up. I didn't get arrested. Who am I to be appealing this? But actually, GRPD's own internal affairs policy allows for third-party appeals and for third-party complaints. It has since the 90s. So my question is, why hasn't the City Commission revised its own language around who is allowed to make third-party appeals to the city, to the civilian appeals board? This has been happening since the 90s, and it, you know, what it really comes on to is like, I am a resident of this city. I saw something that horrified me, and I wanted answers. I wanted to be, have faith that the city would have, you know, the resources to be able to fully investigate the situation as something that was disturbing to someone who saw something that disturbed them from GRPD, and that doesn't appear to be the case. The good news is, City Commission Policy 800-02 is within your power to alter. If you allow for third-party appeals, it will increase the ability of community members like myself to help hold police accountable, because you have to be as good as your word. You can't just say you want these things and advocate for them when your own policy hasn't been revised, and GRPD's own policy outdates you. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
Thank you. Hello, y'all. My name is Nicholas Jansen. I am twenty-seven years old. I live on the west side of Grand Rapids. I'm an educator, fifth grade science, and I want to tell you all about the first moment I knew I wanted to have kids. At twenty-seven, I was substitute teaching at the school district I grew up in, and I was in a preschool classroom. I went over to the art section, bunch of stuff out, and this little girl came over saying she wanted to make a card for her mom, and could I help? Of course. Took a piece of red paper, fold it in half hamburger-style, put that little dotted line, half a heart, told her to cut along that line, see what happens. She cut it out, kind of squiggly, and the heart fell out, and her hand shot up, her eyes went wide, and she just shook with excitement, was like, "Oh, my goodness!" And called other friends over to start wanting to make hearts for their moms and their daddies, and my heart melted, y'all. I knew in that moment, I want to have kids, and I thought about what it would be like to have kids in the state of Michigan that I grew up in. And I think about it, and I think about it, and I start to get choked up, and I start to have a hard time believing that can happen, as my eyes get watery and things become blurry, because right now, we are in an emergency. This climate crisis we are in is getting worse. We are having dams breaking in Michigan. We're having utilities fail our people, because they can't deal with the cold winters. We're having children have to drink poisonous water from pollution from factories and from neglected lead pipes, and we are failing, our generation, we are failing people like me that want to create a better future. And we know we are failing, and even more so, our black, brown, indigenous, and poor communities that are already being oppressed, already been, being overpleased, and they will be the ones that face this crisis first, because we already don't invest in them. And it gets me so sad, because I go to school with these kids every day. They are so wide-eyed, they are so excited, and when we talk about science, they are so engaged, they want to know about our world, and then they ask, but like, what's happening with these floods? What's happening with these fires? Why are our homes burning? And I don't know what to say. I want to tell them we're doing something, but I'm, when I look up here, I'm not seeing leadership. A declaration of a climate emergency with no action is nothing. It's nothing. It's looking us, it's looking people in my generation in the eye and saying, "Go on, keep on living." We're not talking about whether we want to have one, two, three, or four kids. We're talking about whether we want to have kids at all. We are kept up at night, trying to figure out how we are going to not make it through to retirement, but how we're gonna make it through the next decade, because things are happening now, now! This is not tomorrow. This is not a decade off. The opportunity to do something is closing. It is closing, and it is not gonna open up again. And we are all gonna be affected, and it's going to be people that are young, people that are still being born, that will be waking up and being like, we have no options, because those in power right now did nothing. Which side do you want to be on? Take action now or get out of the way. Oh, and Black Lives Matter, defund the police.
Hey, come on. Next commenter.
Hey, I'm Mitch. I live in Grand Rapids.
I live in Grand Rapids. I just kind of want to acknowledge the place of privilege I come from for it to have taken me so long to be here today. But I had a lot of time to slow down and pay attention to what was going on in the world in the last couple of years, to climate change accelerating. And as I learned, my heart broke for people suffering, our most vulnerable suffering now, for people who suffered for decades before someone as privileged as me learned enough to care, and for the people growing up now who never get to dream of a future, of a secure future in the way that we took for granted. I used to dream about a family, but now I'm terrified at the thought of children, of a world that may not let them grow old. No amount of learning and educating myself helped. And I reached a point where I was just going to keep spiraling or do something. And I started small, and it felt insignificant and probably was. But through that, I met other people, many of whom are here tonight. And together, we did small things, and we started to do less small things. And that brought us to, but did not conclude with the march last Saturday in the cold rain while you were all home. And I will continue to do the things I can with my energy and my career and my life because that is what I need to do to live with myself, to look a kid in the eye someday and feel anything but shame for the potentially dead world we are leaving them. We are here because it's something we can do. We shouldn't need to tell you that you should care about the planet, but we know we need to, and that's why we're here, because it's something we can do. And what you can do is bigger than that, and you so far refuse. You can go home and you can emotionally distance yourself from this, from this statement because it's uncomfortable and convenient. You can tell yourself it's not your problem. You're not the bad guy. You're the adult in the room because you're not vulnerable to it yet, and your kids aren't yet. You can go back to listening to the interests of corporations that fear a world that isn't dying because they will make less money in it. Or you can start doing what all of these scared, brave people are here to do, everything they can. I'm just asking you whose side you're on.
All right, next commenter, please.
Hello, my name is Haley Jones. I'm 24 years old. I live on the west side of Grand Rapids. And I have a little story to tell you about when I was 16 years old. And myself, my younger sister, and my parents were in the Canadian version of the London Eye. It's right next to Niagara Falls. It's this massive Ferris wheel with these like metal orbs that you get into and then go along, and you're like dangling over the side of Niagara Falls. I am terrified of heights, but my little sister had wanted to do it for forever. So we went to Niagara Falls, we went into the London Eye, well, the Canadian version. And we got to the part at the top where you just go over and you're literally, like you look down through this glass floor and you're just like right over the falls. And a massive lightning storm started. And this ferocious rain started swinging the little orb that we were in, the metal orb affixed to the giant metal wheel, started swinging back and forth, and the lightning is slowly coming closer towards us, and the rain is getting harder, and the lights start to flash, and then they go out. And then they started flashing red, and we're pressing the little call button for help, and no one is saying anything. No one is responding. And right now, I feel like we, as a planet, are inside that giant metal orb. The lightning is getting closer, the water is rising faster, and we are getting second by second closer to plunging to our utter deaths, just absolutely falling off the edge of the cliff. And I, I hope, I hope that maybe that call button has just been broken. I hope that it has been that you just haven't been able to hear us, that the line has been downed, and that we still might be able to fix it, that maybe, maybe this mic is on for the first time and you will hear me. You will look in my eyes and decide that I deserve a future because I know that you don't know me. I know that you don't know that I dream of having kids. I dream of having a garden. I dream of my dog, who probably won't live that long anyways, but I dream of a future for my dog. I dream of a future where I don't have to wake up and face this inevitable fact of our utter demise. It is, it is no longer a question of whether or not we are going to face a crisis. It is how bad that crisis is going to be, how soon it is going to hit us in the face, and how many people will drop to their deaths because of it. And you have a chance right now to make that better, to do something about that. You could give me the chance to have a kid. That's something I have wanted for my whole entire life, and I'm probably not going to do it because I have to do this instead. I am tired. I am so, so incredibly tired. I have so many other things that as a 24-year-old I want to be thinking about. And so maybe you don't know me, but maybe you can think back and remember what it felt like to be 24 years old and to dream of what you're going to do someday. And now I want you to think of every single choice that you had the privilege of getting to make, and it is gone. You don't get to make that choice because the planet is going to make it for you, because a bunch of adults sitting behind glass are going to make it for you. I might not have the ability to stop that, but I have the responsibility to force you to do the right thing. You have to take action now. It is almost too late.
All right, your time is up. Next commenter, please.
Hello, my name is Nate. I'm 27. I want to start by standing in solidarity with Justice for Black Lives to demand that the GRPD be defunded with those funds going to the marginalized communities that are disproportionately the targets of police violence in this city, and also that the GRPD be held accountable for brutalizing peaceful protesters exercising their First Amendment rights. Drop the charges against these protesters and stop politically repressing teenagers and young people. Now, my primary reason for being up here is because I recently joined the Grand Rapids hub of Sunrise Movement to fight against further degradation of our environment as well as our physical health caused by this climate emergency. Earlier this year, I saw the effects of man-made climate change ravage Michigan's environment and its citizens with major flooding in Detroit and heat waves statewide. People in Grand Rapids have died from these disasters, and we've known for decades that not only were these deaths avoidable, but they were preventable. I felt isolated and frustrated by what I thought was an inability to do anything to fix this crisis. But now myself and thousands of other people here in Grand Rapids have woken up and realized the very thing that you sitting up here don't want us to realize, that our individual influence is strong and that organized together, our collective power is unstoppable. City Manager Washington, I saw that you were recently listed among the 200 most powerful business leaders in West Michigan. That was put out by the Grand Rapids Business Journal. Let me remind you in case you have forgotten, you are currently not a business leader. Grand Rapids is not a business, and your constituents are not your employees. You are a public servant, and you work and serve all of us inside this room and out of it as well. So I ask you all, in this matter of climate emergency, whose side are you on? Are you on the side of the few business leaders and wealthy individuals of Grand Rapids? Or are you on the side of the tens of thousands of citizens of this city who voted you into office and who are currently demanding citywide carbon neutrality by 2030? You've all recognized that there's a climate emergency, but the city climate resolution you've passed does not come close to reflecting the scale and urgency of this emergency. We demand that nothing short of citywide carbon neutrality by 2030 will protect Grand Rapids from the worst impacts of this climate emergency, and it needs to start in this city's black, brown, indigenous, and poor communities. Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
My name is Kelsey. I'm 26, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. Before I begin with what I'm here to speak about today, I just want to emphasize what so many have been saying tonight and have been continuing to say time and time again, GRPD needs to be defunded. So I'm here today to speak on the issue of climate change. Like many young people today, I'm forced with the challenge of debilitating climate anxiety and uncertain future and a governing system that refuses to do more than the bare minimum to address it. If those in power neglect their duty to the people, and may I remind you, your duty is to the people, there will be dire consequences. Millions are already facing their homes destruction, extreme weather events are more frequent, and pipelines are being built across indigenous land, breaking treaties, including Line 5 here in Michigan. The greed of the few is destroying the lives of many. Now, we've asked you, the city of Grand Rapids, to pass bold and immediate climate action. Your response was 80% municipal by 2030. While you believe this to be an adequate response to the growing threat that we face, we are here today to let you know that this is not even close to enough. So many young people are crushed by the fear of what our world may look like as we grow older. Will we be afforded the same opportunity to plan for a stable future as so many of you have? We should be going to school, establishing careers, starting a family. Instead, we are here today demanding meaningful change because we know the stakes are high, because we know a stable future may not exist without drastic action. Too often, corporate greed has outweighed the chance to build a sustainable future. Business and profit have always taken precedence over what is best for us. We are here today to ask you, what side are you on? Thank you.
All right, next commenter, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and City Staff Members. My name's Janet Zon. I am a member of the First Ward and also one of the co-chairs of the Grand Rapids Climate Coalition. I want to also begin by acknowledging the frustration of our friends that come week after week and speak to you and feel unheard. I was struck by something that was said just a few minutes ago, that it costs money to have free speech rights exercised in this community. We did a climate march, as you probably know, and have been, has been referenced already this evening, last weekend. It cost us a lot of money to do it. We were, had the privilege and the ability to raise the money to do it. And I think that it's one more example of where there's disparity in this community. And especially, it's frustrating when we hear the commitment to DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, this is a priority, and not addressing issues like the police, like homelessness, and of course, climate change. We're not seeing the justice, we're not seeing the equity, and if you want to adjust climate justice, you have to go beyond a municipal goal. Municipal goals do not serve the community that needs it the most. And I want to just say that loud and clear. And I also want to chime in from another generation's perspective, hearing all of these young people come and speak from their hearts, with their anger and their fear and their rage and their frustration about the life that may be cut short, the opportunities they will not have. I'm 60 years old. I could be their mothers, and I am not going to be a grandmother because my kids, like them, say, we aren't bringing kids into this life, into this planet. In fact, they left this community because they didn't see it as a hopeful place to live. So Grand Rapids is a city that always wants to be on the top 10 of this list and that list. We want to be the place for opportunity. We want to bring more people here. And I will say to you right now that you're going to scare away these really good kids if we don't address this. I want my kids to come back. They're not coming back until they see that this is a community that in good faith does everything possible to mitigate the risks and the disaster that is looming before us with regard to climate change. Thank you.
All right, next commenter.
Hi, my name is Edie. I was born and raised in Grand Rapids. I'm 25. Over the pandemic, I experienced a lot of fear. I was scared for my family. When I started to learn about the climate crisis, though, that fear took on something new. My future started to look a little bit different. I don't know how to explain this to you guys. You, how do I say this? You got to have the lives that you wanted, right? For the most part, you got to, you got to buy your homes, you got to have your families, you got to raise them in the city that you love. When I, when I see myself having a home, I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't know if it's going to be flooded or, or ravaged by wildfire. When I see myself having kids, I just, I just don't know if that's going to happen. I didn't realize how much I want these things until I saw politicians throwing them away for, for short-term political gain. I, I didn't realize how much I cared about this city until I, I froze my butt off in the freezing rain to try to convince people that this city is worth saving, that my future is worth saving. I didn't realize how much I care about this city, and I, I guess I have the audacity to ask you to care just a little bit more. Not, not 85% municipality-wide care, okay? I'm talking about actual care for the communities who need you. I'm talking about putting people first, especially people who are at the front lines, our BIPOC, our low-income communities. Because if you don't fight for me, fight for them. If you don't fight for them, fight for your children and their children. And if you don't fight for them, I would love to know why you do, what you do, and which side you're on.
All right, next commenter, please.
Good evening, my name is Tara. I'm 15 years old, and I'm an organizer with Sunrise Movement, Grand Rapids. I'd like to start by reiterating what so many people have already said today and at every single meeting I've ever been at, and that's the demand that the city of Grand Rapids defund GRPD down to the mandated 32%. Now, I want to take you back to a day about two and a half years ago when I was in seventh grade. In my science class, I remember my teacher putting on a documentary about climate change. This was far from the first time I'd heard about climate change, but for some reason, when I think about it, this is the day that comes to mind and what I remember so vividly. Because suddenly, as I watched the fires spread on the screen, I could see my own future going up in flames as the rising sea levels engulfed homes and towns, they took my childhood innocence with it. As the trees toppled, one by one, I watched my dreams topple beside them, and all that was left was the weight of the world on my thin 13-year-old shoulders. And suddenly, I sat in that classroom with my hands shaking and despair filling my heart, and it was unignorable. That morning was the last time I can remember when I was ever able to think about my future without the climate change looming over me dictating every single choice I make. And maybe you all up there have never had to feel that existential dread the way that we do every day. Maybe you've never had to lie awake at night with your heart pounding and your mind wide awake because all you can think about is how terrified you are. But we've felt it, and we're here, and we're telling you, and it's your job to listen. And then to make a choice. Because we're at a crossroads, just like that day back in seventh grade when I realized that my future was far from guaranteed, and I realized I would do anything I could to protect it and to fight for the world I could imagine. Because I can still imagine a world where the generation after us isn't met with question marks when they think about their future. I can still imagine a world where those of us coming of age will have access to good union jobs that pay us a living wage, like the jobs we can create through the clean energy industry. I can still imagine a world where everyone, especially the marginalized communities that are already oppressed and already feeling the worst effects of the climate crisis, will have access to real opportunity. I can still imagine a world where if I ever have kids, when they're 15 years old, they will just get to be teenagers. That's the world I want to live in, and that's the world I can still see through the smoke. But time is running out. Today, we're here to ask you, which side are you on? Will you stand by while our futures go up in flames, or will you do your job? Commissioner O'Connor, which side are you on? Commissioner Repart, which side are you on? Commissioner Yussasi, which side are you on? Commissioner Lanier, which side are you on? Commissioner Moody, which side are you on? City Manager Washington, which side are you on? And if you say you're on our side, then it is well past time to act like it. There are no more excuses. The clock is ticking, the pressure is mounting, and my generation is running out of patience. Which side are you on?
All right, next commenter, please.
I'll tell you, I hate to be last after her, after Tara, because I think she sums it up pretty well. And I hope that you all go home tonight really thinking about what was the first time that climate, if that is something you care about, that what was the first time it impacted you? And I'll tell you, it was for me about three years ago. I didn't think about it at 13. I didn't think about it at nine. As many of you probably watched the news and saw this weekend, we held a climate rally. And it was downpouring by the time we actually got to the walking part. And I made an effort to ask people, why did you continue to stay out here? And as I asked one family, two parents and a little girl, and the mom looks at me and she says, I'm very surprised we're still out here because our daughter, who is about seven, does not like to be wet. She's drenched in water. And you can see that the little girl who is seven understands the impacts of climate and the heaviness that comes with an impending doom of what will happen in your future. And I doubt many of you were thinking about that at seven. And so today, we come here because, as Edie said very well, we hope you do more than 85% municipal care goals. We hope that you will continue to push forward and actually do something that makes a change within our community so that we can think about having kids, so we can think about buying homes, so we can do more than spend our Tuesday evenings here with you, because I'd rather not. So we ask you to do more. But we also, I come back to this point where we've been told in meetings that we need more community input, and it haunts me to this day because And it haunts me to this day, because I'm angry, because at the commission, who says that we need more of it, that we have continued to do it, that the city passed a resolution without any community input. And so we held a rally, and we are continuing to work. And while you tried to pacify us with this resolution to say, this is what we're doing, we won't stop. And it's gotten a lot more people out. And with that, we have messages from all, for all of you, from constituents, because you want more community input. And so we're here today to give those to you. So to Lanier, to Repart, to Yassasi, to O'Connor, to Moody, I did write you one, Mark Washington, but it's lost somewhere, is that it impacts all of us, and I hope that you will continue to make broad changes and to think outside of the box and to ask community, because you all don't have the ideas. And I hope that you know that community has probably better ones. And so we want to be a part of this, and we want to work with the city, and we want to have bolder climate change initiatives, so that we can envision a better future. Which side are you on?
Hello, my name is Richa. I'm here to speak not just for myself, but for my partner of 46 years, Judy Bookman, who, as some of you now know, died just last week. Judy came of age during the worst of the Vietnam War, the war against Vietnam, and just felt it was awful, and asked, what can I do? One of the things Judy decided to do was to not pay federal income taxes, more than half of which went to support that war and other wars. Judy's method, not being a confrontative sort of person, was to earn below the federally taxable income, which at the time was about $3,000. So that forced Judy into what we call simple living. No car, living in a household, shared with other people, doing a lot of recycling, reusing, et cetera. Judy always loved nature. When things got rough, when Judy couldn't understand like that war, or like the threat to our ecosystem now, and in the last 25 years at least, has been clearer, Judy would go into nature and just meditate and write in journal. Judy's approach, now I believe, would be recognizing that we're all enmeshed in an uneconomic, social-political system that's very hard to get out of. Judy took special measures to get out of it, to the extent Judy could. What do we do? I think Judy's method would be to ask questions. What can you, as representatives of our community, do? Maybe the first question Judy would have asked is, what can I, Judy, do? Or what can I do more than what I'm already doing? And as a spiritual person, basically, somebody who lived by the spirit, do it, just ask you to, you and all of us individually and together, to contemplate prayer, retreat, alone and with others, these questions. What can we do to support the efforts being made now, the coalition efforts to get carbon neutral by 2030, which we all know is inadequate, those of us here at least, know is inadequate, but still, as a group effort, that's very worthy and that Judy would totally support, very collaborative person. So please, think about that. Thank you very much.
All right, next commenter.
Hello, my name's Anna Cornolia. I live in the second ward. And I've, I've lived in Grand Rapids for most of my life. I'm a biologist here, and I have a young daughter. She's nine, and I'm speaking here tonight for her. I'm really inspired by all the people I've heard tonight. I find this format for speaking very terrifying, so appreciate you hearing my comments. I, I've been part of the Climate Coalition since it started in 2019, and I was glad to hear that you are starting to consider climate change in your resolutions and your movements. But we were disappointed that only the municipal, municipal things were considered. And so really, I'm here to ask you that really, we need climate, I'm sorry, this is so scary. I'm here to ask you to support carbon net neutrality, community-wide, by 2030. It's so important. We all need it. We can't do it without you, or maybe we can, I don't know. But thank you very much. Hope you all have a good night.
All right, and with that, we will close this portion of public comment, and we'll move to comments by Commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Yassasi.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you all for coming out tonight, and I really don't have anything else other than that tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming out and expressing your thoughts about these issues. And I, every, every time we're here, I appreciate the passion and solidarity that you bring into the room.
Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you, Mr. President. You've done a fine job today, presiding, I just want to say that. Thank you all for coming this evening, and I appreciate the comments that we've heard. And I will, actually, next week, next time we meet, I won't be able to be here at 6:30, but I'll continue to do so for anyone who'd like to have dialogue.
Thank you. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you all for coming out. I want to especially thank those who gave us the cards. It was really important. Some of the things that were said touched my heart. Climate control is something that I think is very important for the rest of our lives. And so we do want to be considerate of what's taking place in our country in reference to climate control. And to all of you who are sitting out there, I just want to make a correction. It was not Mr. Washington who said that not to defund the police, that I wouldn't do it, it was me. So I want to take that off of him. That blame comes to me, okay? So, thank you. I did make that comment. I made that comment, and I can stand up to what I said.
I believe you.
Hey, it's his turn to talk. He didn't talk during your time, it's his turn to talk.
And so, as Commissioner Lanier said, I'm open anytime for any conversation.
Commissioner Condon? All right, Madam Attorney? Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank the staff for the work in preparing for these meetings. I also want to again congratulate Ms. Harris for her appointment to our community's children, executive director, and the work that you heard today about after-school programming in partnership with GRPS. Also, I appreciate the work today and the improvement of another $4.6 million for acceptance of home art funds that will allow us to assist in housing members of our community. And you also heard the upcoming report this morning about our plans for additional winter sheltering. So I want to thank Ms. Bohaj for her work in doing that. Also, I appreciate the work of our treasurer this morning in diversifying our investment portfolio, not only investments, but also in the diversity of broker-dealers and using people of color for those investments. I also appreciate the work of our Public Works Department in Mobile GR in advancing our sidewalk snow plowing services for this winter, and doing it in all three of our wards as we continue to try to increase our micro-mobility efforts. And again, your appreciation for your support in approving the $1 million transfer to the Affordable Housing Fund. And as a reminder to everyone, there is no fee for freedom of expression permits. So if you, excuse me, excuse me.
It's his time to talk.
Commissioner O'Connor, may I have the floor, please?
Yes, it's Mr. Washington's turn to speak, guys. All right, Don, you're done.
So if you have any questions, raise your hand. Doug Matthews can assist anybody who has any question about permits, because you pulled some before, but he's able to answer your questions that you might have. Thank you, sir.
All right, this means adjournment.